The February twenty second, two thousand twenty-two regular meeting of planning zoning commission of New Canaan, Connecticut. Lynn, if you can please tell everyone how you're going to run this hybrid meeting, please.
So. In the in the meeting, if you're on Zoom, please don't the video is been shut off. Please don't turn it on unless you're speaking on a matter. Only the commissioners are the video is showing on the screen. If you want to speak on the matter, we're going to take the people in the room first and then we'll take the people on Zoom. And if you're on Zoom and you'd like to speak. If your icon and when the appropriate time comes for that application.
Thank you, Lynn. If anyone is in the room or on Zoom for items four sixty-eight South Avenue or one forty-two Michigan Road, those applications will not be open this evening. We anticipate opening them at the March twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two meeting. I'll now take the role. John Goodwin, I am here. Ken Turner.
Here.
Dick Ward.
Here.
Dan Radman is not here. John Chris.
Here.
Curtis Cornia.
Here.
Kristin Nielsen is not here. Arthur Cassavant.
Here.
John Engel.
Here.
Chris Herring.
Here.
James Bash.
Here.
Paul Connect. We have Paul there. Okay, let me know if he.
Here. There he is, right here.
Yeah, let's bring him on.
How many people do you have in this meeting?
Forty-three.
Okay, Paul Connect.
You're muted.
Well, if you can unmute yourself and let us know you're here.
Present.
Great, thank you. Okay, Mr. Nag, you are seated for Mrs. Nielsen and Mr. Herring, you are seated for Mr. Radman. Before we get going, I'd like to make a brief comment. As most of you know, an eight thirty G affordable housing application for seven fifty-one Weed Street has been filed with the commission. It has not yet been determined when the commission will open the application. Commissioners, as you know, we are limited as to when and how we can discuss applications. The particulars of considering an application filed under eight thirty G add another layer of complexity. For much of the public, this is probably all that much more confusing. Therefore, I asked our law firm, Birch and Moses, to write a memo addressing both eight thirty G specifically and planning and zoning communications more in general. That is posted on the town's website for planning and zoning for the planning and zoning commission. Lynn, is that the right spot?
Yeah, it'll be posted tomorrow morning.
Okay. So it'll be posted on the P and Z's website as of tomorrow morning. Even though the application has been filed and we are in public now, we will not be discussing this further tonight as the applicant is not present, nor, of course, have we yet to hear from the applicant in public. Moving on to the public hearing. Items number one and two, as I said, have been not opened. Item number three, one ninety Brushy Ridge Road, upon application of Robert Frangione, Frangione Engineering LLC authorized agent for Jennifer Hagerty, owners for special permit approval of section six four G, six five B two A and C and six sixty to legitimize the construction of a retaining wall greater than four feet height, the disturbance is greater than ten thousand square feet of land area and the important importation of over a thousand cubic yards of earth materials in the one acre zone at one ninety Brushy Ridge Road. Is Mr. Frangione on?
Yes, I'm here. Rob Frangione, Frangione Engineering, licensed professional engineer in the state of Connecticut, here representing the Hagertys. Also on with me tonight is Michelle Crakes. She was the, I guess you could say, the builder of the house. I apologize, I'm coming to you from Florida. Ordinarily, I would be there in person, but for much the same reason that some of our commission members aren't present tonight, we're all on school vacation, so. The application before you, as it says in the in the synopsis, is to legitimize a retaining wall. A four to six foot tall retaining wall that is predominantly, you know, greater than ten feet from the property line at the on the Garibaldi Lane side. And of course, I'm trying to do things online. This is what happens when you aren't home. Yes, on the Garibaldi Lane side, there's a the tail end of the retaining wall is on the now formerly Merwin side. That's where it gets much smaller. Basically, what happened was there they got a building permit to do renovations to the house and do some additions and all kinds of things with the patios and stuff like that. And we came in under a stormwater exemption because there was less than a thousand square feet of increase in a previous area proposed. So from that point, sorry to say, I've been out of it. Fast forward, they get a CO on the house. The owner builds a retaining wall, as I said, ten feet off of the Garibaldi Lane side. As you can see from the letter that we submitted to Maria Coplet that talked about the roof drainage and and other things. You know, there's a large vegetated, natural treeed, vegetated area between the wall and Garibaldi Lane. So basically, what we're here for tonight is to legitimize that wall. There you go. I'm looking at this on my my iPhone. That's great. Yes, we're just looking to legitimize that wall. We still have some homework to do. DPW Engineering has some questions for us with regards to drains behind that wall. Based on discussions with my client, it's footing drainage that's behind that wall. There are some white pipes that are up higher on that wall. Those will be removed. As part of doing that, we're going to look behind the wall to see what's going on as far as gravel and just the construction of it, because we do have to go for a retroactive building permit. So when we're doing that exploratory work, that's when we can pull those pipes out. So really, what the we're here for is that wall and the grading which has been done in the rear yard. It's all lawn. It was lawn before. And it's lawn now. Michelle, if you're here.
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, Rob, thank you so much. Michelle Crakes, I'm standing in for my sister Jennifer Hagerty and her husband Sean Hagerty, who are dealing with some health issues for my sister, but I just want to start off by apologizing. Obviously, this was an oversight on our part. We did a full building permit for the structure and then last summer dealing with some other things. And unfortunately, this is just felt through the cracks, but. I'm working with. I'm sorry, cracked. But but obviously, working with Rob now to get this all rectified and we've had numerous discussions offline about, you know, how we go about doing that, you know, getting a drainage plan in place, you know, getting some, you know, working with Rob to basically get everything legitimized. So, you know, thank you, Rob, for all of your help and, you know, if anyone has any questions, you know, please let me know, but I'll be responsive to getting this together quickly.
To me, this is just.
Hey, any questions for the applicant?
I gather that there is, even though the wall has been completed, that there seems to be perhaps some drainage issues that are not yet fully resolved. Is that accurate?
So the drainage issues are what the town engineer is concerned with, Maria Coplet. She doesn't want us having point discharges from roof leaders or driveway drains coming through that wall. And so part of what we're making sure is that there are no point discharges coming through, you know, what we're what we've basically seen out in the field is this footing drainage coming through the wall, which Maria is fine with because that's just groundwater. It's a trickle. We're not sending the the downspouts straight through. Now, there are trench drains in the driveway because there's a curb there and that pipe juts through the wall. The, as part of this project, what we've discussed with Maria is that we'll remove those trench drains and remove that pipe, that the the solid pipe that's coming through the wall. You know, before this house was built, this 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 one acre lot is at the tail end of about a seven and a half acre watershed upstream of it. And all the water coming down the common driveway from some of the houses on on Brushy Ridge there all flows down, flows onto this property. This property receives a lot of runoff from, I believe it's one eighty-eight Brushy Ridge to to the east. But again, we're just downhill, so of course, we're going to receive water. It is what it is. But that water is getting passed through and it goes to Garibaldi Lane. So, yes, there are some drainage issues, however, and I believe you're going to hear from from some neighbors tonight. You know, they are downhill of this property, so. Anyway, to answer your question, yes, we will be addressing that.
Can I, I need to ask a question of Mr. Goodman. This is Commissioner Cassavant. I'm sorry to do this, but and I was unaware of this conflict until about a minute ago. I need to be recused from this matter, I believe, because Michelle Crakes, who is representing her sister, is a professional client, a professional client relationship with her firm. And I don't think that I can vote in this matter because Michelle represents a relatively significant client. And obviously, I was unaware that Ms. Crakes would be representing her sister tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cassavant. Mr. Bash, you're seated for Mr. Cassavant.
Can I can I just make one quick comment? Hello, Art, thank I saw you pop up on the Zoom there, actually, so thanks for saying that, but you know, another point to this is, you know, obviously, we are getting runoff on this property from the property that is directly next to us. But, you know, as anyone that had seen the property before, it was a very sloped yard here and it was not much grass on that yard. So this improvement to the property, and as I said, you know, obviously, we will go through, you know, the drainage plan and get everything addressed and remove those pipes that are of concern at the top of the wall, too, so there's no point discharges. Another item was changing the cobblestone to so the the water would flow freely off the driveway. So it's just sort of a normal slope, but with that said, I do think that the changes actually are an improvement to what was happening previously. There was a lot of dirt and and water just flowing directly down the backyard of this property before the wall was built, so. So I actually think that with this, it should be better. Of course, I do apologize for, I'm sure during the construction, there was, you know, water that came down onto the other properties, but, you know, I think that hopefully in the last six months since this was constructed, that those properties have seen less water coming out. We've actually taken some videos of the point discharges and the drains. And it seems like there's like, like Rob said, only a very small trickle coming out, so. So I hope that answers some of the questions.
Hello, it's it's Kent Turner. I've got a question for Rob. The mitigation measure that you're proposing is basically allowing everything to run off of the the house, the site to basically contain itself and be able to drain within your property line. I I don't feel or I don't believe that that is really any kind of a storm management plan. You're not, unless I'm missing something, you're you're not retaining the water, you don't have any bioswells. It's just going to run off and you're going to compound the problem. Yes, you can say, well, maybe it's a little better than when it was a dirt lot. But as a homeowner and the improvements that you made, it's your responsibility to mitigate that runoff.
And and that's what we will be doing. Again, we have to look at the original coverage versus the as-built, and if we go over that thousand square foot increase, that's what we have to mitigate per the town's drainage policy. You have to keep in mind that there was a house here before, there was a driveway here before, and everything just sheet flowed straight into the woods, and there's a good thirty-five to forty feet plus from the driveway to the property line. Part of the problem is there's a septic, their existing septic system is just off the driveway. That septic system didn't move and that hasn't been changed, so, you know, we can't really take the lowest point of the driveway, which is the closest point to the property line, and put bioswells, rain gardens, any kind of anything there because you have your septic system. And this is something we've discussed with Maria. You know, I think there's ways of capturing some runoff from higher portions of the property and kind of holding back water up high and letting the lower stuff go. But again, we also have to keep in mind that there always was a driveway coming down there and there's run on from other properties coming down that common driveway and out towards Garibaldi Lane.
Great. Well, when, so if I understand correctly, you you are going to do a design, an engineered design that is going to do some calculations, you're going to understand the hydrology, what's going on with the soil and how you're going to retain it, and then you're going to come back to us again, or how what's the next step?
That's a great question and one I was going to ask you guys. You know, the fact of the matter is we're trying to rectify a situation here, and the wall's built, the site is done with disturbance. So at the end of the day, the plan is to, like I said, take if we're going to trap any water, it's going to be way on the other end of the property away from this wall. So, you know, I don't know if that could be a condition of approval, that we have to have DPW Engineering sign off, or if we hold the hearing open, I'm not quite sure. I leave that to the discretion of the commission, so.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. I'm looking at the photograph of the of the wall and there are two white pipes close to the grade level and then there are two black pipes underneath them. Those are, what do they do and how are they going to stay there?
So the black pipes on the bottom, those are the footing drains. The white pipes that are on top, those are the ones that are in question by Maria Coplet. And so what we're going to do is we're just going to remove them because they're basically weed poles up top, is my understanding. And they can be removed. And then at that point, all there is is weed poles at the bottom to take the hydrostatic pressure relief from any rainfall that's coming behind the wall and keeping it from disturbing the wall.
Yeah, so the two black pipes will remain and that is how water will be evacuated from this area?
Yes, from the footing drain.
And there's this black tarp fence. I guess that goes away eventually?
Right, that's the silt fence that was put up to prevent erosion during construction. We've left that up, you know, while this is all going on, there's little no reason to take it down until we're we've completed this project. And you can see by looking at the at that picture where the silt fence is, the trees and everything beyond it have not been disturbed.
It's in the slope down to Garibaldi begins essentially the silt fence.
Correct.
The steep slope.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. How much water comes out through those footing drains?
Very little. I mean, footing drains have, you know, a flow rate of like five gallons per minute. You know, less than a tenth of a CFS. It's minimal, infinitesimal. There's a lot more water coming from the watershed up above it, seven and a half plus or minus acres up above it generates a ton more runoff than a little foot drain for a wall.
So that on this property, water drains from various places, not just these two footing drains down.
Correct.
Garibaldi.
Correct. The entire property pitches out to Garibaldi and there's about a, based on the watershed map that I did, there's about a hundred and forty foot change in elevation from the top of the watershed out to Garibaldi Lane. Hundred and forty foot plus or minus drop, based just counting contours. The steep slope that comes down all those properties out to Garibaldi.
Well, full disclosure, I used to live on Strawberry Hill Road, which is the next one down way over closer to thirty years ago, and just behind me on Garibaldi were two newer houses that were built after I purchased my house and it's really steep when you go down Garibaldi towards those two houses. I mean, it's a steep drive down and then it further drops off towards Strawberry Hill, which slopes down again. Essentially, you're a river valley heading down to the Five Mile River and there is a lot of water coming down because I was at the bottom and I noticed it, so. A lot of water runoff in that area, given the geography.
We're not disputing that.
I can vouch that there is water runoff from Brushy Ridge down through Garibaldi into Strawberry Hill and then down towards River Street and the Five Mile. Thank you. I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Anybody else? Mr. Frangione. I'm a little confused. So six, well, how 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 tall is the retaining wall?
So I think at its highest, it's six feet and then it drops down to four because I'm looking at a right in the middle of the wall, we've got bottom is eighty-four, top is ninety point nine. So six point nine, almost seven feet tall at that point.
Okay.
But then in other places, we've got bottom of wall eighty-four, top of wall eighty-eight, six.
And then.
The fact of the matter is, we need a special permit because it's greater than four feet, so.
And Lynn, maybe I'm reading this wrong. We can, under six five B two A and C, we can grant a special permit?
Um, yes, so it's a zoning permit for the wall and it's a special permit for the movement of more than ten thousand square feet of dirt and a thousand cubic yards of that came in. They also built the wall. Under six point five, they need a whole permit, a separate zoning permit for the wall.
No, but but I'm just, I'm looking at six five B two A and C. Where does it say we can issue a special permit?
Well, the law was built and they have, it's for the movement of dirt to.
But six five B two A and C say a wall can't be more than four feet.
It needs a special, it needs a zoning permit or to be granted a special permit.
And Lynn, please talk into the mic more.
It's not working over here.
Mr. Bash, she's having problem, the planners having problems with the mic. If you need me to repeat anything, let me know.
Okay, if you could summarize, John, I can't hear anything.
Okay.
Or it's anywhere that's taller than four feet tall with a separate zoning permit as far as the approval, which it didn't get, but the special for more than ten thousand square feet of dirt and in six point four.
No, but I'm just saying, six five B two A and C say that you can't have a wall greater than four feet in height.
Yes.
Okay, got it. Okay, so that's the zoning permit. Okay, perfect. Mr. Bash, I was I was looking at, they're asking approval. So they're not really asking approval for six five B two A and C. That shouldn't be in the request for the application. It should really be just six sixty and six four G. So, Mr. Bash, I was questioning whether we we could grant a special permit for a wall greater than four feet. It it turns out we can. Is the bad news, the good news is a zoning permit can cover it.
So then what would I need to withdraw that section of the application?
Well, no, I think what we can do is at the right time, I'm not sure it's going to be tonight, but if if the commission decides to approve the the special permit request, I think we can just specifically point out that we're only approving six four G and six sixty.
Okay.
When 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 if we get there, people feel free to remind me of that.
Is. I've always been under the, I know that retaining walls must be no greater than, what? My name is John Engel. Retaining walls must be no greater than four feet and no closer than eight feet from each other, but when they are, I thought it was a building code issue that they had to have a rail because they were considered dangerous if you fell over, fell off them. So is that, you're saying it only requires a zoning permit. What would Brian Platt say?
It's about the separate issue. They need a building permit.
Right.
But that'll get addressed somewhere else. Thank you.
Okay. Can I make a comment?
Sure.
This is Chris Herring. Is there a landscaping plan to, is there any sort of mitigation from a viewpoint perspective to either reduce the effective visual size of the wall from those below? And from a coverage map perspective, I was looking at the plan. I see that the building coverage reduced, but from a non-permeable surface area, it looked like the driveway was quite a bit bigger than the previous driveway, so. Was that all?
So as, let me parse that into two parts. As far as screening, as you can see from those pictures, there are mature trees just down slope of that wall. And so I don't see that planting trees or any other kind of screening would be beneficial here as far as the property to the south of this one. You know, from their vantage point, you're kind of looking just at the lawn and it's a rear yard, so. Really, the only people you could be screening it from is on, you know, the motorist's son Garibaldi Lane. And then your other question about coverage, I have to, that's part of my homework with Maria is.
Lynn, can you go back? Lynn, can you go back to this photo here? The the photo. Yeah, so this this was the photo I was focused on, Mr. Frangione. So from from, I certainly see that, and I went to Google Earth and looked up from the the roadway below, and I certainly see mature trees, but because they're mature, they they don't block the wall because their their leaf coverage is above, right? So often, we've seen people plant plantings below to again mitigate and screen. So it'd be interesting to understand as well what the the planting plan is above because of, you know, that will help understand, help us understand what the impact to the neighborhood is as well.
So again, looking at this photo, if you look, it's a little foggy. It was a rainy day when I was out there. If you look to the south, you know, down the face of the wall, what you can see is the fence from the neighbor that that screens this. So really, the only person, people looking at it are standing on Garibaldi. I can discuss with my client, maybe some shrubs or something in front of it to 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 screen the the sides of it, to just kind of break it up. But that's, I I get the sense we're not going to close this tonight, so that's something that we can keep open.
This is Michelle again, and to address two things, I don't think there's any issue planting vegetation along that wall line if that makes a difference for anyone, so I I'm fine with that. And then the issue of the height and the the plan is to put a fence along the edge there, so, you know, no one would go over the side, so we can include that in the plan as well.
Uh, this is a further question, picking up on the planting issue. It's not just visibility, but also soil stability and that, you know, there is going to be runoff there. Water and soil to the sense there are, you know, vigorous bushes along that wall that would not only provide some cover, but also help the roots themselves would provide soil stability and also help soak up some of the water coming off that area, which I would see as a plus broadly. I mean, this is going to solve the problem, no, but, you know, somewhat of a dent in it. But the soil stability issue is is one of the issues which which seems to be addressed, need to be addressed here and certainly putting some good sized bushes in there, you know, six, six, seven foot bushes in there would would probably be a help.
Okay, any other sense of things? Okay, thank you. Any other commissioner? Okay. Lynn, we we don't have anyone from the engineering department this evening, correct?
I think Tiger is online. I don't know if he's planning to speak to this.
Okay. The town engineer, she's not on the line, though.
The town engineer can attend to me.
Right. Let's see if Tiger has any remarks and then we'll, otherwise we'll open. Let's see if Tiger has any remarks and then we'll, otherwise we'll open up to the public.
I don't have any comments, John.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tiger. Okay. Would anyone from the public like to address this application, starting here in the room? Nope. Okay, Lynn, let's take it out to Zoom land, please.
Okay, if anyone wants to speak and then on to, and I know there's a few of you, I see, could you just raise your hands so I can find you, please?
Hey, Lynn, it's John Belucas. I'm not sure, um. If I need to raise my hand. I'm the neighbor directly below on Garibaldi.
Did, I'm, I'm sorry, I may not have heard. Sir, did you, uh, state your name and address? You did?
Yeah, I'm sorry. It's, it's John Belucas. And it's, uh, one, one twenty-three Garibaldi Lane. I'm directly below, uh, the property. I've lived here for almost twenty-four years. I think it's, uh, it, it's incredible that, you know, we're trying to say that there's no additional drainage issue or water issue. Uh, both my neighbor at one oh nine and I have had significant issues since July. That wall has come down, that wall actually came down twice during construction, um, and sent dirt and debris down onto our properties. I actually have pictures, um, I'd like to share. Um, my neighbor has had to put, um, additional drainage in the back of his yard. Uh, unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, uh, to, and, uh, his cost to do that has been twenty thousand dollars. I've got water flowing on the side of my property that I've never had before. Uh, there's an ice flow on the side of the property directly underneath that big black pipe. And when I hear someone say that there's a trickle, every time it rains, you can hear the water flow, uh, through that pipe, uh, very quickly. The water's been going across Garibaldi at times, and again, it flows right down to my property. Uh, would it be okay for me to share my screen? I, I promise to go through the pictures pretty quick, but I think it tells a different picture and what the engineers and the property owner are trying to present.
We have other do that, Lynn?
Yeah, make them co-host.
I don't know if you can see that.
Just can you, can you forward your PowerPoint to us that posts on the website so that, um, because it should have been posted before the meeting?
You want, you want me to forward it right now in the middle of this, or?
Uh, you, you can do it afterwards.
Okay, I will do that. Can, can you all see the pictures?
We can.
Okay, so this is what I look at every morning, so, you know, uh, the, the consideration that there's, uh, you know. Um, coverage or that the trees are mature and it's not a problem is not exactly true. Uh, you can see that, and I would argue that it's greater than six feet in some of the spots on the wall as well. Uh, this is what we're looking up at from Garibaldi. Um, again, this is a view directly from my driveway. This, this is what I get to wake up to every morning, but I'm not even concerned about the aesthetics, honestly. Although the pipes jutting out, you know, um. Obviously aren't very appealing. Um, and you can see more, more pipes here. This drainage pipe at the corner, uh, is the one I'm talking about. That water flows. And at one point, it was just coming out directly into, onto the ground, coming straight down. Getting rid of all the dirt and, and flowing right onto my property. I guess they decided to dig it into a hole. But water still has to come out somewhere, right? So even though it may not be coming, and I may not visibly see it coming off the wall because of the drainage pipe. It actually comes out directly and you'll see onto my property. Uh, but this is not, you know, what was shown in the pictures, uh, in the application. Again, this was not permitted, uh, you know, we didn't have an opportunity to view any plans prior. And it's created all this damage with excess water flow. Uh, this is just an example of after one of the rains where Tiger and his team, as he had to come out with street cleaners. Uh, this is Garibaldi, which is almost impassable at that point, and Tiger's, uh, you know, crew, uh, crew had to come with the street cleaners, uh, across Garibaldi. You can see the water flowing down, uh, at, on the, um. Left-hand side of my property onto the driveway. Uh, here is a retaining, you know, basically a retaining wall, a brick wall I've had on the side of the driveway for, again, twenty-three years. And it's just, the dirt's been washed away multiple times. Three or four times, I've had to actually go back in, replace the dirt. Uh, you know, I've got hedges there that I'll probably have to replace at some point. You can see it even exposed some of the wiring. This is the bottom of my driveway, and it's not only one instance, it just happened in infrastructure. By the way, the black silt screening was not put up until late September when we complained for the third time to Maria and Tiger about this. Um, so again, this is just the bottom of my driveway where the drains come down. Again, we've lived here for twenty-three years. We've never had a problem with drainage. Uh, this is just coming off the backyard. Um, where you can see the water, it's probably a better picture here, where you can see how the water just drains down from the property. Um, again, not something that had occurred ever before, and it continues to be an issue to this day. Now, uh, what I can show you is, uh, this is where the black pipe comes out, if you can see at the top. Uh, where it comes out, it comes across Garibaldi, and now I have a trench, basically, of water coming across the property. Uh, my landscaper couldn't even get in during the fall. He couldn't get in with his normal equipment. And had to get a smaller mower just so we can cut the grass, where there was grass. Now I have a situation where there's plenty of spots on the property. That I no longer even can have grass grow because it's just seeping water. I've got water against my foundation. It just sits there. I've never had water. As long, I never had any type of drainage. I don't have to have some pumps in my basement. I'm concerned about that right now. Again, you can see this, um. This is just, you can see the snow, so this is just only last week. You see the black pipe up top and you see the water coming across Garibaldi. And if you look here, this is the side of my hill. This is that, an actual ice flow of water. And I, I keep repeating myself, but did not exist for the twenty-three years that I've been here. Um, you can see the ice across the property and a better shot of it down the hill. And all this ice is directly from that black pipe. That I think we said, it just trickles water out. Um, I guess we decided to store some of our, uh, garbage or pipes or something on the side of the wall too, so this is what we get to look at every morning. Uh, you see the pipes and, and other things on the side of the wall. I guess it looks better on, on our side than it does on theirs. So. Now, my neighbor who couldn't be here tonight. He had to dig up the entire backyard. You could see water flowing for weeks. Uh, the water was actually coming out underneath the house and through his foundation. So again, he had spent twenty thousand dollars at one oh nine Garibaldi. Just to do something about the drainage, um, so that it didn't, uh, destroy his backyard and give a place for water to flow. So he's on the other side where the black pipes are coming primarily from the driveway. So this has created a large, you know, a big hardship for us. He's had to have people, his landscapers come to clean. What I showed you is my driveway. He had even worse on his driveway. And, um, I know Tiger came out to see it. I really appreciate that. Maria's been out a bunch of times. Uh, so this is, is not even an issue. And, and again, I, I would encourage somebody from the engineering, from the town to go and measure the wall. It's greater than, than six feet in, in the middle and higher. So, um, at, at a very minimum, those black pipes need to be closed off, and they can't keep draining onto our properties. Um, and, you know, I definitely should need, need drainage, but the drainage problem's got to be resolved. Uh, it's still a problem for both myself and my neighbor who are directly below. My neighbors lived there for twenty-five years. I've been there almost twenty-four, and we've never had this issue. We were actually encouraged when they bought the house because, uh, there was an old shed and we were grateful to see it taken down because it was a bit of an eyesore. Um, little did we know at the time that we would create this problem that would be just, you know, incredibly devastating for both my neighbor and I.
Okay, thank you, sir. Um, would anyone else from the public like to address this application?
Mr. Post, can you stop sharing the screen so I could see if anyone else wants to speak?
Did he, did he stop, Lynn, or he's not here? Sir, can you, um, stop sharing your screen, please? Thank you very much.
Sure.
Would anyone else from the public like to address this application?
I don't see anyone else. That are raising their hands. There were some letters that were posted on the website.
Okay. We'll read the letters. You think we're good, Lynn?
I think we're. Is there, is there anyone else at all?
Okay, well, commissioners, um, tell me what you think. It, it seems to me. One is Mr. Frangione needs to resolve this with the town engineer and get the town engineer's approval. And then second, some of you have brought up a couple of other issues. Um, so. If, if any of you want to revisit any of the other issues, X of the town engineer to agree to a plan that Mr. Frangione submits, is, is there anything else you want to say?
Water mitigation would seem to be an issue. Uh, and second, um, some vegetation for screening and also to soak up some of the water, stabilize the site a bit.
Okay, so a landscaping plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody, any other commissioners?
And do you want a landscaping plan that's been worked out, uh, with the neighbors? Do you want to hear what the neighbors think about it, or you just want the applicant to present a landscaping plan?
Uh, I think it would be helpful to see it ahead of time, have the posted, share it with the neighbors and, um. You know, the town engineer too, since there may be some engineering issues regarding this that we may be in blissful ignorance of, but I'm sure the town engineer will. Provide some sunlight on that issue. It's my guess.
Okay.
They require a zoning permit. From building, not from us.
Correct. Right.
They're going to need a separate building permit from this.
Well, they get a zoning permit from you.
Yeah.
From the. P and Z department, not from the commission.
Right, a zoning permit if the wall is higher than four, four feet or higher.
Correct.
Wouldn't it make sense that they get that? You have sort of a. An approval.
My understanding was we had to get the special permit resolved first. That was my understanding. I could be wrong.
Is that?
The dirt is like, the retaining wall is holding up the dirt for the ten thousand square feet that they moved. And the greater than a thousand cubic feet of dirt that they moved into the site. That's what's holding up, but they moved up, they've had dirt to service, so.
So if they get a zoning, if they get the special permit from us, then they go and get a zoning permit for the wall?
Yeah, and if you grant a special permit for the dirt, you're essentially recognizing that they're going to need the, the retaining wall to retain all that dirt because they're on the seep slope.
Okay, so, so Lynn, if I understand it, if, uh, the commission proves the, um. Uh, ten thousand square foot as well as the, uh, importation of fill, which is, I think is the second one we have to. That in, in effect, it's going to be a de facto approval of the wall. Is that essentially how it's going to work out? And then you will make it a jury approval, probably.
The zoning permit, and they also need to get a build permit because it's a separate, it's a separate permit that they require.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um. Mr. Frangione, any questions? Uh, hopefully we've been clear as to next steps for you.
Yeah, I think we have a roadmap and, um, I look forward to seeing you guys next month.
Okay, thank you.
In person.
Can I just make one quick suggestion? Obviously, listening to the, to the neighbor speak, I don't, I don't want to cause problems for them. So should I have that black pipe removed immediately? So then there's no, you know, because obviously a month is going to go by, I can call the contractor now and have him remove the pipe. Because it seems like that black pipe that runs along the side, it's not in the wall, it runs along the side, is causing a lot of the problems for them.
Sounds like I, I would consult, uh, Mr. Frangione, but it sounds like it would be a nice gesture.
Yes, Michelle, we will talk about this offline.
Okay, no problem, but I, I just want to put out there that we're obviously going to work on it quickly, and I want to get this addressed for them immediately.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
Yes, um, Mr. Chairman, this, this issue is much more complex than the simple removal of a black pipe. Um, this, this is a grading issue. This is retaining water on site. Uh, it, it's not as simple as it, uh, is being made out to be. Removing a black pipe is going to do basically nothing. So I think, you know, uh, Rob needs to, uh, do his engineering. He needs to, uh. Prove to us how that water is going to be retained or diverted or whatever, and, uh, so that the neighbors are not suffering from the runoff.
Yeah, I, I think we, we all completely agree with that. Um, okay, this hearing's continued.
Thank you. Good night.
Welcome. Good night.
Yeah.
Okay, so item four, we have nothing to deliberate and decide upon, so we're into regular meeting. Item number five, seventy-two Park Street, upon application of Alfred Krola, authorized agent Fiona Sig, owner for site plan application approval for personal service establishment, section four two C seven. In the retail A zone at seventy-two Park Street, who's here to present? Sir, kindly, uh, step to the podium, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to refuse myself on this. Uh, Mr. Dr. Cole has been my optometrist for over twenty years, and he always talks about his daughter and so forth, so I feel like, and I know him more than casually, so I'm going to pass.
Lost that one.
Okay, uh, Mr. Bash, uh, you are seated on this one. Or Mr. Chris? Please proceed, sir.
Uh, I'm just going to speak for up two minutes and then Callie, you could ask questions, but, uh. Callie, uh, is a licensed, um, estheticianist, been at twenty-five Burdice Avenue for several years, uh, and lost her lease, uh, and the building sold. And, um, with that said, uh, I made a few phone calls and, uh, was lucky enough to have Chris Sig on the phone. And, uh, came up with a great spot at seventy-two Park Street, uh, Suites two twelve and two thirteen. Uh, with that said, uh, he gave us a very, very long lease that we saw, that we signed. Um, the first thing I did was I went to the building department, uh, talked to, um, Tracy Fizzellato. And gave us all the paperwork to, uh, basically, uh, draw some plans up. It was a one room. We, I think you have drawings there. We made it into a, uh, a really nice salon for Callie. Basically, the building department said, go ahead with it, leave the walls open on one side. They came, gave us an inspection, and I said, quote unquote, is there anything else I need to do? And they said, no. Right before the end, Lynn, uh, left me a phone call at my house and said, we have to go through planning and zoning. And I didn't know that. That was the first I ever heard of that, so. Uh, I said, well, let me know what I need to do, and she, um. Emailed me all the, uh, the paperwork involved in getting a, what's called, I guess, a change of usage application. When Callie, years ago, not years ago, a few years ago, she was in Norwalk. When she came to Burdice Avenue, we didn't need to know that, but I was ignorant of the fact that that was. A salon, and she didn't need to basically have a change of usage on that. Um, so I got that paperwork and looked at it, and I was totally confused and was kind, kind enough to, um. Go up and talk, uh, to Lola that spent twenty minutes, uh, helping me fill out the application for P and Z. And, uh, just this morning at seven thirty, um, we got, uh, signed off by the fire marshal Paul and Chris from, uh, the, the health department. So we're here tonight to, uh, hopefully, hopefully that you can help us on this. Okay, great.
Do you have anything, Ed?
Oh, no.
No, okay, great. Uh, questions for the applicant?
The current zoning is what, and the application is for what specifically? Is it, is it zoned specifically and only for offices at this time?
I'm thinking of the retail A, and they are going to the personal services establishment, and they need to, uh, create a site plan for that one. And, um, but it should be usually on the second floor, so the, the personal service establishments on the first floor is, um, to put retail. They're the, um, open door so that people walking on the street could see retail, but they're not on the first floor, they're on the second floor, it's similar to the one at seventy-eight Main that came through.
James Bash, can you hear any of that?
No, I can't. If you could summarize it, John, that'd be great.
Oh. I think what, I think what we've learned is that this is the retail A zone. And typically, that means retail on the first floor and you can, um. You want to do it?
You're doing a really good job.
Uh, retail on the first floor and offices on the second floor. This is personal services. And so it's not, while it's not on the first floor, it's on the second floor, it has windows. And so it's not, while it's not on the first floor, it's on the second floor, it has windows facing the street and therefore they've been asked to make a a more product centric showing in the windows so that it looks like retail A. How's that?
Thank you.
And it, yes.
Thank you.
Keep going.
Oh, so so I mean, they're they're just here for um a change of use and um that that, I mean, that's pretty simple. We did something similar um a few months ago at 78 Main Street. They're also on the second floor, but they also came in for a similar use. There's no parking part requirement because they're in the retail A for no for any of the uses. There's no parking requirement, so that's not an issue here.
But what floor is it on?
They're on the second.
So when I look um, when I look at 72 Park Street and I'm believe I'm looking at the same building, um, the SIG building, it faces Park Street and it's a the second floor appears to be almost the first floor from this elevation, let's call it, because the White Buffalo and those establishments are the first floor, but they're behind and below. So this establishment, you know, honestly, looks pretty innocuous from the outside because it doesn't have any signage beyond the address and and some minor professional signage. So it seems from a intent perspective that even though this is the second floor, from a structure perspective, it's really the first floor from a access perspective on 72. Is that fair to say?
It is. It's one of the changes.
When you go in the front, you go up a flight of stairs. If you go into that front door, you're on the first floor, you go down to the basement where White Buffalo is. Uh, and then you go up a flight of stairs for where her salon is.
You're you're on the top floor.
The top.
Top.
Almost almost the third, well, okay, but i- is there any external signage that's going to change from a um?
There's there's two uh, whatever you call it, with just
Same plaque.
Yes, and Chris already put one up there.
Okay.
But Lynn, the bottom line is changing use.
Yep.
Okay. So we're we're approving the change of use.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions to the applicant?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well, let's take a vote. Um, do I have a motion for approval or denial of the application?
Motion to approve.
Uh, reason for approval, Mr. Angle.
While it's in the retail A zone, I don't think it's um changing the character of the building. I don't think it's changing the character of the block. I think there's plenty of precedent for personal services on the upper floors in the retail A zone. So for those three reasons, I would move to approve.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
I I heard Mr. Ward first. Um, any other comment on the application? Okay, I call the question, John Goodwin. I vote yes. Kent Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
Claire just Claire Dascornia?
Yes.
Arthur Cassivan?
Yes.
John Angle?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
James Bash?
Yes.
Ag. Do we still have Mr. Connect?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, item number six, planning subcommittee update. Uh, Mrs. Nielsen is away for the week, but Mr. Herring has some items for us. Mr. Herring.
Thank you, Chairman. So I um I connected with Krista briefly and Lynn, and I wanted to provide a a subcommittee update to the commission um and offer some points of discussion and points of direction um under the commission's wisdom. So um Krista's secretary was able to articulate um what we discussed prior. Um, so when we were talking in our last session about the planning subcommittee work plan for 2022, there were a number of key focuses that seek to rise to the top of the commission's discussion. Uh, the primary, a couple of them included um updates to environmental and sustainable code changes and senior housing needs locations. A secondary focus and um important discussion on design guidelines to add more teeth to the village district guidelines. I think um Kurt Kent had mentioned that as as one of his interests and develop residential infill design guidelines. And then to circle back on changes to section 7.6 um and the completion of the 830 J plan. And then leave the mandatory code changes that are required um to land and and team. So with with those four points um articulated, I wanted to see if we could move the ball forward on on the two first points a little and 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 discuss the strategy for pursuing some of these points and see what the commission's interest was. So um Krista suggested two plans of attack here and they're 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 kind of interconnected, so bear with me as I try to explain this because I'm not a planner like Krista is. Um, but she said we could approach it from a policy perspective, i.e. look at the the strategy of how we look at the P O C D first and maybe articulating the P O C D elements a little more fleshing them out a little further in certain areas that may be a little more vague and whether we want to um put some put some teeth into some of the policy guidelines that then could push towards regulations that would follow into them. An example might be, I'll take John Chris's example, so um more more thoughtfulness around plantings and environmental consciousness, so um, you know, um native planting, so we could potentially, if we agree to that as policy as a commission, then we could, from a regulation perspective, uh enumerate non non native plantings and specify that they shouldn't be included in site plans and landscape plans um moving ahead. So that would be an example of deciding how to flesh out a policy further um and then going into the regulation that would follow. So um there are many examples that she she put in there, but um the idea would, in the the third third item that she spoke to, and this is something that we'd have to think about as a as a commission, is that there are frameworks and wireframes that other P and Zs have have arrived at for, um, you know, uh, different topics, so it'd be senior housing, uh, conservation that have um produced some outcomes that might be valuable to the town in different ways. So what I mean by that is um with the the town council very interested in marketing the town as a leader in Connecticut and a leader uh for a destination of a livability, there's the Sustainable C T program um where the town has already earned a bronze certification, which distinguishes the town against other towns. And so there are some there's some goals that we could, if we decide that that's of interest, we could, we could look at those elements as a potential outcome. And so you could see how these different things could weave into uh different applications. We saw an application tonight that looked at plantings and and absorptions and runoff that impact um housing both in the actual uh unit, but as well as that the neighbors around it. So um, so I guess from a a strategy perspective, uh and and we could start with some of these policy ideas and and try to isolate some of these areas of policy where we feel like we have an interest and want to extend these policy comments further, or we could go specifically to regulations where we feel like we'll leave the policy alone and and wait for the P O C D um process to take its course in a couple of years. Um, and just focus on those regs like a non-native where we could, we could think about discussing some of the policy elements. So we pause there on on those three different ideas, pursuing policy-specific regs in these areas or um looking to one of these third-party plans as a potential guidepost.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I I would think that if there's a good idea that is beneficial to town in New Canaan, I don't see a reason to wait to take action on a good idea that's proper for New Canaan. And I think sustainability issues are certainly one of them. Um, I mentioned, and Fisher Herring has also mentioned various, call it uh fauna-related issues, should be floral-related issues. Um, but there may be others, for example, um for commercial establishments that they're coming to our um town or new developments, should there be something that they have to at least think about solar? You know, maybe it's not because it's run by trees and just won't work, or given the the orientation, uh, you know, it's just not going to happen, but you know, they can have a professional solar person saying, okay, for reasons A, B, and C, it's not going to happen, but maybe it will, and we can make that a um requirement or a suggestion, uh, similar with power plugs for, let's say, um, commercial buildings, uh, multifamily, where that certain number may, a number of uh electric car plugs may be uh mandated in the parking lot. We did this, um, fellow commissioners with the um uh library, you know, they have a a couple spots on on campus and we required that there be some power plugs there, so we've we've sort of crossed this bridge. Uh, I'm also thinking a bit about oil and water because we had, was it in um Mill Pond where there was a water leakage? Was it Mead Pond?
Bristow, Bristow.
Bristow, yeah, an oil thing. And so, you know, is this something perhaps, was that just a one-off? That's just one of those unfortunate things that can happen? Or is there um, is there some something else we should be thinking about regarding this? I I don't know. But the um, the solar, the um electric car plugs uh and um dealing with um flora and planting plans uh would seem to be low-hanging fruit, sorry for the pun, uh, and things that might be um you know, pursued sooner than later. So that'd be my thought. Which may be uh revisited in more um general terms when we review the, when we update the planet conservation development, which would be a 2023 action. But again, if it's a good idea, you know, why wait? Be my view.
Sort of look at policy and and then tie it into some of these regulations, so that to to kind of
Yes.
start some of those discussions earlier and have it feed into the P O C D.
Well, the the P O C D, you know, talks about, um, for example, native plantings, but it's a little squishy. It's not too much teeth in it. It says it'd be a nice idea, but it kind of stops there and talks about all the sustainability issues, but it's i- it's it's not as codified. And so perhaps we could take those ideas, um, put some uh teeth into them. And then when we revisit the uh planet conservation development 2023, which is when I guess this is probably going to happen, I was just last time. It can uh be revisited as far as language, would be more in keeping with perhaps some regulations that have already been passed by this commission. Uh, and it would simply be recodified there. So I think we have enough in the planet conservation development to sort of check the box that, yeah, this is something we do. And then we would maybe firm up the language as we move forward, be my thought.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I would like a um to be part of the plan, uh, public input, some way of soliciting public input. I would hate at the end of this process for the public to say that two or three commissioners got together, thought about what was important, wrote it down and started regulating us, you know, I I would like um and and I think that the public's tastes change. If you ask the public six months ago or a year ago, what's what's the, what's a hot button issue in front of P and Z? They would have said preservation because the library was in front of us and there was a lot of energy being spent debating preservation. Um, if you had asked the public five years ago, they would have said cell tower height was a really hot button and the town council is talking about the difference between 90 feet and 110 feet and whether to screen them or not screen them. So I just think with respect to um the 50 people who are in this meeting are probably terribly interested in affordable housing issues and uh senior housing issues, and that's important. I think we ought to go out and survey the public is one way of doing it, getting feedback. A second way is is to ask maybe the town council to host a public hearing, or we'll host one ourselves and ask the public for those who want to say more than than can be said on a survey, they could come, they could get the microphone and they could tell us the kinds of things that they would like to see us explore in the P O C D, which may or may not result in in policy. But I think that will help if we're going to go after sustainability or whatever the we we think are the hot button issues. I think it helps us to get some public input and find out whether we're the only ones who think it's important.
John, a question for you, though. You 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 said P O C D there at the end.
Because he said whether we should be looking at this a- as a way to inform the P O C D.
Right, but I mean, frankly, I agree with you. Um but, and again, I have to say, I'm not on the subcommittee, but um yeah, I I I think if the subcommittee were to come up with some priorities and then hold an input session, um, my recommendation, though, would be for you all to come up with your priorities rather than make it too open-ended. You know, let's have a sense of what the commission thinks.
When I say that, I'm imagining that you would say rate the level of importance one to 10 um uh basically, you know, changes to preservation, changes to sustainability, changed, and we'll begin to start to rate and rank. And well, and then we'll start to define whether sustainability, their energies is for and fauna, you know, uh native species, or is it um uh car chargers in the downtown, you know, where is the emphasis? Should we be expanding the historic district? You know, is that important? Are we too too stringent in the historic district? Are we not stringent enough? What about in the retail zone? What about our signage? You know, signage has changed a great deal in the last five years. If you've been here long enough, you've you've just noticed that you know, uh, the signs are starting to light up again. We have rules against lit signs and yet it starts to creep up. So this is a good chance for somebody, and I just use that as an example right off the top of my head, for the public to say, yeah, we we don't mind that. Or, you know, that's an old rule and it should have been abolished a long time ago and the and the lit signs are useful to our town, or we don't like it and we want you to clamp down on that. We
So I I like uh, I like Mr. Angle's idea. You know, I think even as a precursor to that, I think it would be good to elicit feedback from the public as to how we're doing um in terms of meeting some of the the goals or the reasons why people choose to live here. So if we, and if if we have a sense, obviously, people choose to live here because it's a quaint New England town, and there are aspects of the downtown that are sympathetic to that, how are we doing in terms of maintaining that? Um, I think getting some feedback on that would be important in terms of setting the table for the priorities that we're eliciting feedback on thereafter.
I think if the um subcommittee were to uh come up with some more concrete issues, simply publish them, it provides an opportunity for the public to show up and comment. And so, you know, that that you got to give them some grist for the mill a bit, and that was would be the duty of the uh subcommittee to say, here are the you know, three or four things we we think we want to focus first on, and people come in and say, no, don't you know, focus on these two and forget the other two, but add this one. I'm happy to have that conversation, but I think we would need to present that to the public and open it up to the public because we certainly would want, I mean, it goes without saying, we would want public, public input into all of our decisions and have ample opportunity for the public to comment on priorities as well as some of the details.
Makes sense. And one one thing I should add here that we covered was this idea of, you know, say we, I mentioned four or five topics that we discussed in our last meeting, but the idea of perhaps bringing in some professionals in those areas and having them speak, um, very much like the way you went and and found a person to uh expand on uh 830 G, have perhaps speaker come and talk about you know, historic districts and or a speaker come in to speak about conservation and and what does that mean? Does that mean conserving the watershed? Does that mean, you know, energy? Does it mean uh transportation? What do these different things mean? And then honestly, things like, you know, does that, how does that impact property values? Is it more expensive to build? Is it, is, you know, what what are the impacts that down the line? And because I think a lot of folks, um, I mean, I need the vocabulary that some of these professionals have. And we sometimes see with the architects that come to us, so we could, one thing that we could do is subcommittee is is try to recruit a roster of potential speakers um through our continuing, would that be something that, because I think that could kind of build into the public and obviously have the public come to those types of experiences.
Well, an example would be the first selectman suggested last month, um, if you as a subcommittee prioritize senior housing, you talked about Russ Barxton. So uh, yeah, I think that's right.
For example, in some of the um landscaping issues, I think it's the town of Monroe has their planning zoning commission um made some changes to require at least a high percentage of uh native plants and also to ban invasives that are fall under the uh Connecticut invasive list. There's an official list in Connecticut of invasive, so those can't be planted. And they've already done that, and so, you know, they may be of help in, you know, providing uh input and, you know, how they put it together, how they thought about. in, you know, providing, uh, input and, you know, how they put it together, how they thought about it, what input they receive from the public, give us something to chew on. Might be useful. I'm sure they'd be happy to help. They seem quite committed.
And we could, we can pull your resources from, from those places in West Cog, I know you've mentioned in the past.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. So this is, um, any, so Kent, um, Arthur, Claire, other comments on?
I, I would only add that we should try to coordinate with the newly created committee that the Board of Finance has also created um, on affordable housing to make sure that we're, uh, consistent. I think the notion of publishing a list for public comment is an excellent idea so that anyone who would wish to come before P and Z could comment on it.
Thank you, Arthur.
Just have a, a quick, quick, uh, comment about, I, I agree with everything that, um, is being proposed. I'd like to just throw out there, and I know that the, we've got a lot on the, um, the agenda or, or played as far as our planning. But, um, you know, wave any is something that, um, I believe needs to be addressed as far as the uses, you know, the long-term, um, potential growth. Um, I think it, you know, we need to consider a master plan. I think we really need to solicit everybody as stakeholders to understand the needs and to plan something out for the future so that, uh, we don't see these little, you know, this creep of uses that, uh, continue to chip away at the openness. And, uh, even though some of this is, is a good thing, um, it just seems to be, uh, continuing and I don't, um, I don't see any kind of a strategic plan that really thought, thinks it out, has everybody's buy-in and works together to, uh, come up with a plan that maintains wave any and its greatness. So that, and, and I, I know that we've got a lot of, uh, items on the P O C D to consider and, uh, but I think it's, uh, you know, again, that, that priority that, that it's something that, that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Kent.
So, um, would, one, one comment, um, so we'll be kicking off the P O C D process as we're all saying effectively in 2023. And for those of you who have not been through the process, um, it's a tremendous process. It's very time-intensive. And, and Lynn, jump in or, you know, John, you've been part of it, or Dick, and lots of you have been part of it, so feel free to jump in. But typically what we do is in the past, and I think we're probably going to attempt to do it again, as we, we hire Glenn Schauder, who is one of the more experienced planners in the state of Connecticut. Why somebody like that? Well, one of the reasons is he's one of the most experienced planners in Connecticut. He knows what's going on throughout Connecticut. That's number one. Number two is he's, he's, he's done, I don't know if this would be his second or third P O C D, um, but he knows New Canaan. And he knows the issues and we've used him, for example, in the telecommunications regulations, we've used him on multiple issues. Um, so he understands the process and the way that process works is we do a series of brainstorming commission, uh, sessions with the commission and then we do open it up to the public. And for those, again, you've been through this, is, is we, we do a series of open hearing and we, we listen to the community. So that is what will be getting kicked off, let's say, 2023. Lynn, Lynn, is that your projected timing for, does that sound right?
Yeah, it might actually happen later this fall.
Okay. So Lynn, for those of you didn't hear, Lynn, Lynn said potentially later this fall before 2023. So the only thing I would suggest to the subcommittee to think about though, is, you know, how do you think about what you want to achieve in 2022 versus what gets dealt with in the P O C D process? Um, so just food for thought there.
I'd be interested if each of the members of the P and Z sent you their list of five or seven things that they think that ought to be, and it would be interesting to me how much duplication came across that list. Cause you'd see some obvious things that we've discussed tonight that would get broad support from the public because they've been talked about. But there are a few issues out there that only affect a very small subset of this community. For instance, the historic district, very small, but the people in there are very passionate about. And actually the historic district would actually affect the entire town, but, um, famously, I would say Airbnb. Airbnb only affects a very small piece and we pass some, some rules and we haven't heard it, heard about it since. But in Nantucket, it's ripped apart the entire island and has made its way onto the New York Times and the Wall Street Journal, you know, for months while billionaires fight against millionaires over Airbnb. So I think that there's, uh, you know, some things that we haven't even talked about that are going to be very of, of intense interest to small groups. And I'd like to see what the range is, you know, if, if we all emailed you our lists, I'd like, then you could compile it and tell us what you think the P O, what, what the priorities are, at least among our, the nine of us. And that'd be a starting point.
I think, uh, Lynn, did you want to say something? Although we need, we need you to, can you come over here so everybody can hear you?
Sorry.
So just a note, you can't email each other, so you need to email me the list.
And, and Krista did gather some thoughts earlier and, and, and so some of these topics didn't come out of Krista or myself. These were actually submitted by commissioners. So this list was some of the boiled up commentary from November and December. So, um, but I, I certainly understand that there are other, you know, each month involves new topics. Uh, so, um, I will liaise with Lynn and, and get those, uh, elements together for our next meeting. So thank you for that feedback.
Okay. And I think we've got, uh, sir, you, uh, uh, St. Luke's? Oh, okay. I thought we were keeping here all night. Exactly. Um, okay. Thank you, Mr. Herring. Item number seven, administrative actions or other matters. This may properly come before the commission. A three seventy-seven North Wilton Road, St. Luke's School requests approval to have NYCT Football Academy LLC Soccer Camp, Monday, March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two to Friday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Um, Lynn, what should we know?
So, um, it's just one of the standard requests to, um, um, let another, uh, group come in and use the facility. And, um, as in similar requests, um, I just need your vote of approval or denial or
Okay. Any, any, um, any questions for Lynn on this agenda?
Why is this even in front of us?
Typically, we, whenever, um, this happens at all, all the institutional uses, you see the country school, St. Luke's, you see it at Grace Farms when they come in with, um, outside uses, then they bring it to the commission.
John, there's historically, as you well know, institutional uses in, um, in, uh, residential zones has been a challenge for us. And anyone could argue it's overkill, but we've, we founded a, a good policy to try to stay on top of, um,
I guess I'm, I'm curious that, um, is it, it's because it's an outside entity running the soccer camp, not that the soccer camp is a new use. They have, you know, we, we have many soccer camps on the soccer field. So it's not a new use. It's just a new entity.
You bring it for every
Or may not even be a new entity.
Yeah, for all the soccer camps, they each come.
Okay. So they come, so the same entity doing the same thing each year comes back each year and asks?
Essentially.
Well, usually it's, it's usually where the entity allows or permits an outside third party to come in. So the institutional use within a residential area is being used by perhaps someone that we didn't contemplate. So we sort of have a, an opportunity to, to comment or reject it. Lynn, it's Kent Turner. Um, is this a, a new entity that's using or asking for permission?
Uh, I don't
Have they, have they ever, you know, been, you know, St. Luke's before? Have they ever been allowed? So it's, it's like it's a new, it's a new addition to all the people that, you know, rent out their facility.
I can, I don't, I don't actually, I didn't check that if they're, they're a new one, but, uh, it's a, they've made the request before St. Luke's has made the request to have, they had lacrosse camp there, they've had soccer camps there, and they've brought in outside, um, vendors to do it, to run it.
Well, it would seem like to, to understand if, you know, this is creep or if, if, you know, they're asking for additional, uh, people to be able to rent out the facility. Uh, I think we should know if, if it's somebody that's renting on a yearly basis, or if it's in addition to the past renters.
Right now, they're just renting it out for the week of March fourteenth through the week of March eighteenth. That's all they've requested.
And they don't, it, there's no specification on who it is or?
Um, it's being run by the New York Connecticut Football Academy.
And have they rented the space in, in the past?
That I don't know.
That's what sounds new to me.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, the corollary issue here goes very directly to Grace Farms, where we have objected to for-profit use in the facility quite extensively with extensive discussions. And also the use of New Canaan Country School with the N C B A basketball situation. Um, I recognize, it, it, Lynn, I'm not aware of any complaints that have come out of those alternate uses, but are you aware of any?
No, there have been none from St. Luke's. We've received no complaints of any of the groups that have rented there.
It occurs to me that the question I was asking was, uh, why is it coming before us, not just administrative approval to Lynn? And it, it seems to me that if a sheet of paper was presented to Lynn where it said, is this entity, uh, a repeat entity? Yes. Is this a repeat use of something we saw last year? Yes. Have there been any complaints? And the applicant would say, no. And, and it's basically, they could check all 10 boxes that this is not creep, a change of use, a change of entity or a change, you know, from what has been approved before. Then I would say that we should consider letting Lynn just allow it instead of taking it before us for every routine thing. That would be my feeling on this. But I do, I do agree with you that we should ask those 10 questions when the application comes in. Is this a new entity? Is this a new use? Is this an expansion of a previous use? Just as a matter of course, because if we get challenged later by a neighbor who said, you didn't even ask the question and you approved it, and you didn't, you know, then I, I want to know that we asked those questions of the applicant. But once we ask it, I think you should be able to just approve it or not approve it.
Well, it kind of depends. This is Claire Tiscornia speaking. It kind of depends what facility we're talking about. St. Luke's is fine. But, but at Grace Farms, one of the conditions of approval of their use is that they do have to come before the commission every time they have a new use, or they do have to go before Lynn. So it depends on the facility.
Um, I'd like to suggest that in this case, and, and John, you could tell me if I'm out of order, but I think that given that the timing on this one is close. And certainly I'm sure that organizationally they need to do this. I think that separately, we may want to consider procedure, but I think we should probably act on this one tonight out of fairness to the organization.
Yeah. And, and just, uh, then, uh, I'm going to come right back to you, Art, just as a comment is historically what we have done is we've approved programs for each of the institutional uses. That's what we've done. And I suspect the reason why this is on the application is because this is an addition to the program. But, you know, again, you know, why is this here? This is here because historically, um, this has been a point of contention for certain institutional uses. That's why this is here. I'm willing to entertain a motion for approval. If someone feels we should have more information, you know, we can vote against it. So if I
This is, this is Commissioner Cassavant. I will move that we approve this usage.
I second it.
Okay. I call the, uh, I call the vote. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Kent Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
Uh, Paul Kinnock?
Yes.
Okay, great. It passes. Um, just two other quick administrative items is I strongly urge all commissioners to get town emails. I've talked about this before. Let me tell you from experience. Get your town email. Um, second thing that I'll note is, um, this, this actually, this decision came through a couple of months ago. Um, but there was a FOIA initiated which took over a year to two years. Like, it, it seems like it went on forever. It was, uh, initiated by a neighbor of Grace Farms. And I'm happy to say that the appropriate authorities and the FOIA commission, um, decided against that in favor of the town and that the town had completely followed its procedures, um, in terms of answering to the FOIA. And I want to congratulate and thank particularly Mimi Pitts, who is really an unsung hero in terms of all the work she does. And frankly, also to Lynn Avney, who did a heck of a lot of work on this as well. So, um, it, it showed that the town is, is in this case doing their procedures the right way. Uh, number eight, approval of the minutes, uh, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two, regular meeting. Do I have a motion for approval or denial?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Call the question. John Goodwin, I vote yes. Kent Turner?
Yes.
Dick Ward?
Yes.
John Chris?
Yes.
Claire Tiscornia?
Yes.
Arthur Cassavant?
Yes.
John Engel?
Yes.
Chris Herring?
Yes.
Paul Kinnock?
Paul Kinnock, yes.
Okay, great. Everybody have a wonderful night. Take care.
Yeah, people were away for, um,
People.